God have mercy and grace. We are at your service. So grateful for 146 years. Your Spirit, your call, and your power in this congregation. Abide with us this hour and always. Help us to see and sense your presence, to look to you. We ask these things in the name of our Lord and our Savior.
Good morning. My name is Lori Brown. First, I want to make sure, does everyone have an ear in the back here? Make sure you can all look. Okay. I am here as a member of the Strategic Planning Team. And today, we would like to share with you the results of the survey that many of you took last January. Every congregation has a spirit and a body. Every congregation has attachment to the Holy Spirit and what it means to be holy. Age 144 years is a good time to stop, look, and listen to how we're doing, how we're feeling, and to wonder what God's call was into the future for us, becoming holy and holy. Just a quick review, some of which Susan has shared. The session approved the strategic planning process last fall in October. And a planning committee of 14 members representing a broad cross-section of ages, tenure in the church, and interests was tasked with undertaking the project. Holy Cow Consulting was retained to facilitate the process. Please, next slide please. Next two slides, actually. Thank you. Our current status, while the survey was given and was sent out to 393 members in January 2022, 148 individuals responded to the survey. The survey probed the priorities, interests, issues, and goals of church members. The 148 individuals represent 91% of our average weekly attendance. The consultant indicated that this response rate is meaningful with low margin prayer. Therefore, decisions can be made based on this data set. FPCD survey results were compared to 2,700 other organizations to benchmark our results. These results were also benchmarked to a COVID database, which showed that COVID did make a huge impact on results. It just accelerated what was already happening. The committee reviewed the findings of the consultant and learned from their interpretation. We met in two meetings totaling six and a half hours in March. It took us six and a half hours because the results were complicated. In the same way, as Susan mentioned during the service, that a medical lab report you get from the doctor can be. And just like a medical lab report, it tells us our health. The highs and lows of the results tell us a great deal about aches and londings, and also some next great steps to move towards health. Next slide please. From the survey, we learned about our church culture. In this visual, so you can see the little yellow around the dot. That shows our church. In this visual, it shows we are a little more settled than adaptable, though known as very close to God. And we are more progressive than conservative in our theology. This defines us as a church with a parochial culture. Excellent. Parochial is a Greek word. It means helper or advocate and associates with the work of the Holy Spirit. As a church with a parochial culture, sorry, parochial culture, we are intellectually open and reflective, but paying attention to structure and ritual. We are driven to hand-to-hand healing ministry. We are inclusive, and people may come from different denominational backgrounds. Excellent. The survey also identified our strengths and what we value. Our strengths are we are flexible, and that's an attribute that will help us adapt to a very changing world. We are an exceptionally educated congregation. We offer opportunities to engage in active ministries within the church and the world. We provide strong education ministry. We value exceptional worship and music. And we value and long for closer relationships with God and with each other. Excellent. The survey found FPCD is both clergy-focused and power-focused. FPCD relies on the clergy and a group of church leaders for guidance more than is typical than those we were compared to. Clergy focus means our satisfaction and energy are focused on what the pastor is doing. Clergy focus is probably something we have been for a long time. Clergy focus can be unhealthy when we think that the clergy is the primary force for getting what we want done done. It distracts us as a congregation from our collective ownership of ministry and gift engagement. However, it can be a healthy system if the congregation has agency and ownership in the leadership development, ministry, and mission. We were also power-focused, which the consultant told us was a little unusual to be called. Power-focused is when we are focused on the decision-making group, which detracts from a sense of and exercise of congregational empowerment. Power focus cannot be healthy. It may be related to how people feel about a decision pertaining to a particular issue or the people in power at the time. To be healthy, a healthy system, the congregation needs to move from a power focus to a purpose-missional focus. Excellent. The survey also looked at our satisfaction and energy. Through the survey, we also learned about our church's overall satisfaction and energy. This chart shows the key measures of satisfaction and energy. This shows we scored in the low-average ranges. This is the recovery quadrant. Now, as I said, recovery, not dead, just recovery. Churches, churches in this quadrant require some change to regain vitality and health. And while this may be kind of distressing, the survey did reveal that our members can imagine a church with a higher level of vitality than they are currently experiencing, and we're searching for a pathway that would lead us to be a stronger church. Excellent. The survey tells us there are some specific areas for improvement that might have the biggest impact on members' excitement and feeling about the church overall, helping us move to that transformation quadrant, which is that high-energy, high-satisfaction quadrant. They include providing exceptional worship services, creating opportunities to form meaningful connections and relationships, cultivating broader and more diversified lay-in leadership, explore different approaches to leadership in the process, and to explore opportunities to creatively navigate differences and manage conflict. The survey did find that there was a higher-than-normal level of conflict within the congregation. Excellent. So one of the responses that drove some of these conclusions were often determined by what we call a lack of clear on-the-fence responses. So if we look at this, it talks about our overall energy. And it seems, this is actually was a negatively worded question. And it says, "It seems that we are just going through the motions of church activity. There isn't much excitement among our members." So if we look at those results, remember, this is a negatively worded. 26% disagreed with that. Okay, so that means that they think we aren't going through the motions and they are satisfied. 22% clearly agree with it. We are going through the motions, there's not a lot of excitement. But what really struck the team was this 52%, over half of us were on the fence. We weren't sure, are we going through the motions? Do we have a lot of excitement? We weren't sure. Excellent. The survey also asked the congregation about their priorities. And along with every church in our country, our top priorities focus on growth. However, before we can focus on growth and bringing in new people, we need to raise the energy and satisfaction of our current members. Once we do that, new members will follow. To reach new members and attract more families, we have to figure out why we have a lot of internal fence sitting. We need to better understand what creates our indecision and what folks are longing for and willing to move forward with. Excellent. The assessment results revealed three important areas where we need to do more exploration and listening. We're not satisfied with the way things are, and we're looking for an energizing focus to help us move toward transformation in the next part of our life together. First was worship. Now, the survey did not ask us specifically, what do you like about worship? What do you not like about worship? It just outlined through the questions that there was a need. We want exceptional worship, but we're not satisfied right now. So we need to figure out, what is excellence in worship and music? And what ways of engaging in worship would help us feel in deeper and encounter closeness with God? Us to listen better to each other and to understand more deeply. Therefore, we are creating these facilitated listening groups. Excellent. With the help of our Holy Cow Consultant, every member is invited to come to talk and listen as we unpack the most important priorities of our journey towards transformation. Remember those three, it was worship, leadership, conflict. These groups will be facilitated by a Holy Cow Consultant. Each group will be no larger than 25 people. There will be both large and small discussions. And I will say, for the younger members, don't have a lot here, but we want to encourage them, if they're listening at home or they listen to this later, that they will be provided. So we really want you all to sign up and join us in transforming our church. We really can't move forward until we better understand these three areas. Next slide. And so here you can see our Vision Committee members. So today, we will have some kind of questions. But if you'd like to talk further with someone about it, you know, get the opportunity maybe to answer all your questions. These are our members, myself, Katna Bluh, Justin Coe, Tom Cunningham, David and Nora French, Annie Gold, Susan Hawkinson, Catherine Hyde, Dan Nahara, Matt Ruder, Mike Walton, and Holly Goyd. So please feel free to come. What, oh, and Jeff Holway, yes. Sorry, I missed him. He's up there, I missed him. Thank you, Tara. Next slide. So we are going to move on to questions. And I know this was a lot to take in. And I would ask members who are here from our team, if you also want to answer, I don't want to give them any unanswered questions necessarily. But if you're watching at home and you have a question, feel free to go ahead and text 847-9052. Remember that, Susan? I'm happy to answer the questions, or you want to go? Do we have questions?
I'm wondering if the survey is a future account that the pastor needs to recover from being far apart from his focus. Do you have, is there a type of interview that we can share now? A year or two ago, or when you had the call for it? What was going on in the market?
So we have a question asking about whether COVID, again, impacted possibly the answers. And I will say that, as I said, they did compare a database to other churches also. So they put all these churches together, not only without COVID data, but in the COVID database. And what they found, there wasn't a significant difference. It just accelerated what was probably already happening. So what we're hearing today probably accelerated something that was already taking place. I will say, if you look at that database, yes, probably dissatisfaction among all the churches a little bit higher, you know? And there was a sense of lack of energy because we weren't together. But still, clearly, our results compared to other churches are putting us still in that low satisfaction. They're in recovery, they're in that recovery. Other questions? No, they will not be going over the results further. So the question was, will the listening sessions go over results again? You know, we're not going to go through all this. Little, I'm going to, this is my own comment, so this is, but someone from the committee can jump in. I know that I've been around the church a long time, and we had a number of different strategic plans. And a lot of times, those strategic plans will give us very specific things, you know, like, okay, this, you need to do this, you need marketing, you need to do this, or whatever. And what I found so interesting with this one, really, which almost to me made it more valid, is it didn't say, this is what you have to do. Now, that part may come, I don't know, Susan, I think that part will come. But the reality was, the consultant said, whoa, before you can go there, we need to understand more deeply about these different things going on. What do we want for exceptional worship? What is going on? Why are some people not happy with our leadership? And I can share that at sessions, people were like, well, wait a minute, we're a church, we need to change sessions over time. And remember, these, this survey is a snapshot in time. So at that time, as of January, that's how a number of people felt. And so that's something to keep on to remember. So, you know, I really found it interesting that it wasn't giving us just, okay, this is the next step, but that we're going to have to go through that. That will come.
So at each of the listening sessions, we're not signing up for all of them. Again, you're going to discuss the leaders of worship, leadership, and conflict.
Correct, and it will be facilitated by Holy Cow. We will have small groups, which the Strategic Planning Team, members will be trained and taught to do some of the small groups.
Have they just not facilitated our staff? Maybe a while, but they are not going to be part of that. So people can feel freely to discuss things as they wish, so. But yeah, you'll only sign up for a while.
You got this one? It'll be a little bit, it'll be a little hard.
Oh, okay, sorry. This one? Okay. Susan?
I know that the survey didn't actually say what the conflict was, but isn't it difficult to check out what the conflict we have in the church?
Yes, and I would say that's probably very true, that that will be part of it. I'm not sure, we are really going to depend on our facilitator to help us through that process. We are not skilled necessarily in that. And so that this, Emily is going to really walk us through that and help us better understand that. And, you know, it might be, I don't know yet, and Susan, I don't know if you have more insight, that after we've had these discussions, and I'm sure the Strategic Planning Committee will get together and look all this, maybe we will have more results for people. We just, we don't know yet.
If I can just add to what Lori's saying, the facilitator will take you through some of the results that are on the survey that underher these three question areas in each of the listening sessions. So should we explain that one of the areas that definitely need more explanation because we're, you know, it's part of what we've spent so many hours trying to understand, the clergy focus and the leader focus? Underpinnings that are really of discussion. The leader focus is really a sense, there is a small group of people with power, and that it's difficult to generate new kinds of things outside of that focus. And so it's interesting. That must have been my time, too. So we think we're pondering, and the conflicting things that you raised are really, really important. We cannot move forward until we ask the question, what is it that we are conflicted about? And why is it that we have a small group talking at the front? Those are things that, Lori, I wonder if you wanted to mention some for...
Sure, yeah. Well, having been on session, there are two thoughts I will have. So this is, I'm going to be entering my third year on session. I would imagine some of it might be around worship. We've changed worship quite a bit. We've changed times and, you know, how many worship services, even prior to COVID. I mean, we were doing that. So there may be some questions about worship that, you know, might be driving some of the conflict. But I will also say, my sense, having been on session, is that there may have been conflict due to our social justice issues. And, you know, the, I felt like within session, sometimes we would have meetings, and people, maybe on both sides of the issues, did not necessarily feel like they were heard. And I think part of our issue is going to be figuring out, perhaps, how we might move forward on that. How do we come to a place, as a church, as part of our mission and our goals, to be one and united, but taking in all the different voices?
I know that I have a problem with the aggregate. The number is 35. Where are our...
Well, that's a really great question, because I did, I had that very same question. So I went back and was looking at some of the information that Emily shared with us. And I will say, probably about 72% of the people who filled out the survey were over 55. Now, that isn't that, if you take out kids, so if you take all the kids out of our congregation, kids 18 and younger, that, we still, the majority of our people in our congregation are over 55. But you're right, we want to make sure. So we did hear from some of the younger families, from the families, but we do want to hear from them, because they, of course, are our future. And if they're not happy with our church, you know, they're, they're going to leave. They're going to be gone. And so we need to make sure we do hear from them. So I would encourage, now, it is spring break, as Kathy mentioned, so we have a lot of families who are traveling, because they haven't been able to travel. But we really do encourage you to talk it up. If you know some younger people, I believe we're recording this meeting, so you will be able to hear it again. We do have a one-page flyer that we will hand out that kind of summarizes everything that was said today. So you can go back and reflect on it, or you could hand it out to these young families. But please do encourage them to sign up, because we do want to hear from them. That is important, particularly on those three topics, yep. Done, okay.
Everybody has a logistic question. Are there things in the survey that result in a negative review? Are there areas that are about the fact that our community results?
We are going to hand out what was presented today is on a little sheet. Kathy, wave your hand over there, she's over there. Where you can also sign up for a listening group, if you know today. But there are sheets with all that information. The specific results, they will not, like, as was presented to the planning team, will not be presented, because as I said, it took us six and a half hours. So to just look at the results may not give you, you may have a hard time understanding it, because it took us a long time to understand and wrap our brains around it. Yeah, yes, I think we, it will be emailed, I think, with also a link to the recording. Yep, absolutely. Tom, I think, was next.
Is there a stat after the focus group to maybe share what people don't want? Or we start off on a path, maybe, to help the community with the survey?
Right, yeah. I'm going to let Susan respond, because she probably knows.
If you heard that question, the question is, is there a way for other people to put their input in besides being at these learning sessions? And my first answer, I want to say, is no. If you want to participate in your opinions and your thoughts, be present in the community conversation. There is one Zoom meeting among those visits. So even if you are out of town, you have the opportunity to be a part of that listening session. Now, following the listening sessions, there will be other ways to be involved, depending on what those folks come back in. Some of that is being shaped as we make discovery. So I want to say, ooh, don't think you're going to have this other opportunity. Come, be a part of these conversations. This isn't just saying, oh, this is what's wrong. This is inviting us into the future that God is imagining. And it will take not one person's opinion, but actually, the body seeing to each other its truth. So you need to be in the room with your other fellow church members, speaking your truth, so that we can grow and shape each other. That's part of the issue of the power focus, right? We are a body, not just followers of a leadership team. So I want to say, this is the way to participate. There are six different meetings, one month away, and one of them is Zoom. So before you decide, oh, I want another avenue, I'm looking at my team and saying, we really need people. It needs to happen in the body, not like letters anonymously.
I would also imagine that after those, that those meetings are over, and we've again gone through those understandings and begin to formulate, what does this look like? There'll be further meetings, further information coming out. Yeah. Other?
Yeah, I think my point is more, the conclusions that come up from these smaller focus groups should be some kind of verification with a broader group that this, you know, what was meant by the original survey. You understand what I'm saying? So if you people show up and say, this is what, this is really what the problem is, and this is what we need to do, that might not be what 190 people... this is what we need to do, that might not be what the hundred ninety people meant in the survey.
Okay, and I'm going to repeat what you said, Tom, that the question is whether we follow up on the results of those learning sessions, and the answer to that is yes. This is a process that we are incorporating together.
And one thing that occurred to me, and I think this goes to your question, Tom, is, so, you know, we had, when we worked together as a team, and we heard the results, and we assumed, okay, we're going to go on to the next step, which is defining our mission and our vision statement, and then we're going to move on to the next steps, more specific steps, as you've seen more often in strategic plans. But she said, you got to take a step back. We need, there's some things going on that we need some clarity on. So, we will have to take that information and figure out, okay, what are our next steps? Where are we going to? Then we really start that more, I think, probably the more traditional strategic planning process. So, we're kind of like an in-between step right now, yeah. Any other questions?
I want to thank Lori for presenting the question. And I'm a thoughtful planner, very thoughtful. My question is, compared to other Presbyterian churches, do we know how our bullet points compare?
They didn't just compare us to Presbyterian churches. They were looking at a wide variety of congregation. Many of them are denominational, different denominations. Susan, I don't know, maybe you can remember more.
It has a broad spectrum of mainline congregations of different denominations. So, our bullet points in the graph, in terms of both the culture as well as the level of satisfaction, is based against twenty-three hundred other.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven hundred other congregations.
Yeah, so it did, they do compare us, and there are some churches that are in that high-energy, high-satisfaction, and there are some, you know, one place that I thought was interesting, she said, you kind of don't want to be, is where you have high satisfaction but low energy, because no one's going to move. They're like, oh, yeah, I'm happy with how we are, and that's, you're complacent. So, really, where we are is, though it is a little bit sad, takes you back a little bit, it is a recovery. There is room, and clearly, the survey found that people do feel like we can be more than we are, and that's what we got to work on and get more specific on, yeah.
Is that comparison globally, nationally, you're comparing to the other churches?
Ooh, that I can't, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Go ahead, yeah.
Long term, is there going to be a follow-up survey to see if we moved at all?
Ooh, interesting question. That is something we'll actually have to ask. So, the question was, will there be a survey or a sense later on to see, like, hey, how are we doing? Have we moved someplace? And that's a good question. We'll have to ask the strategic plan, you know, that probably is a good idea. You know, I don't know if that's five years from now, three years from now, I don't know. That's a good question. All right. Anything else? Well, thank you all, I really appreciate it. If there are no other questions, please sign up. But there will be, there are chances online, Susan, to sign up also.
Yes, after tomorrow, probably by Tuesday, I mean, on a Wednesday, there will be a, an electronic version of the survey results that you can pick up here. There will also be an electronic way to sign up for the meeting. Okay? So, I just really encourage you to be a part of the, to trust that God is at work, and we are all in that purpose. So, what you try to be hearing and getting closer to each other, which is really what these listening sessions are about.
And encourage those who couldn't be here today to listen or to at least, you know, download or pick up from the church the results, so they can look themselves and sign up for a session.
And I apologize already that the handout is very small font, and I wanted to pay a special thank you to Catherine Hei and to Jeff Holway and to Lori, who prepared this presentation from the survey results, and the rest of the team who curated it before you got to see it. So, the whole team has been working diligently on this, and we're thankful for that. I wonder if we could close with prayer, and you all make your way. Kathy's here to help you with signing up. If you're not sure of your calendar yet, you will have those electronic opportunities. They will be open through the rest of the month. The first listening session is not until April the 29th. Okay? And there is one Zoom. We join in prayer. Holy God, for your light and for your leading, we give you heartfelt thanks. In your mercy and by your presence, show us the way and help us all. We ask it in your name. Amen. Thank you all for taking the time. Nice job. Really well, really well done, yeah. Practice makes perfect. I thought you did it really good, really good. So.
All right.
You can hear the buzz.
I know, I know.